As I'd like to call the order of Montgomery County Industrial Development Agency meeting. Stand and say the pledge. Thank you. I'm briefing on the agenda of the minutes from August 14th. They were included in our packet. Second to look it over, see if anyone has any changes. Be offered, if not, we can get a motion to approve the minutes. Some second. So all in favor? I think we're opposed, staying communications. We have none, public comments. Chairs report. I'd just like to introduce Christie, if you want to introduce yourself to the board.
Christie Damon on the new set.
I'll reserve my comments on the replay. It's not be very long. So, welcome back Christie. Directors report.
Yeah, just one quick thing to come into our business. Bandan is having a ribbon cutting that's Thursday, the Dog Push Road Apartments. What time is that? Four, four thirty?
Four, four thirty. Four thirty, we have. Band, we have. We have guest entertainment and we'll be able to do the apartments. We're excited to be able to do this project, especially a lot of health and community. If somebody be on the board, we'll listen contract. Glad to see if this project comes to fruition and finishes successfully. I hope everyone enjoys next week.
Week from today.
We're in the park.
I could, I hopefully, hopefully on the rain before.
So, in our packet tonight, obviously, is the IDA application from Amazon. We do have representatives here tonight in relation to Amazon. So, we'll let them take the floor, introduce themselves, and they'll give a little bit of background on the potential proposed projects. You know, best job numbers, kind of where they stand at in their, in their process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gwendolyn and Christine.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you first and foremost for inviting us to be with you this afternoon. My name is Sean Dagan, I'm Vice President of Development and Construction at Blue Island Garden Group. I started my afternoon with an ease little failure, so you don't have to tell me. For a minute, I did just have some printouts I'd like to speak to. It's a little small, so I am happy to kind of walk around the room after. But hopefully, everyone can kind of see it and sort of get the, get the gist here. Yeah, that's fine. So, just starting real high level, this is 137 acres currently owned by Winston Williams Five S Enterprises. 137 acres nestled between Group Five S and the driveway. The project that we're proposing is what's called an ARS facility in Amazon Robotics and Technology Center. This building has a footprint. A footprint, 652,000 square feet, five stories, just under 3.2 million square feet in total. Just to give you kind of the lay of the land as to how this facility will operate. Tractor trailers will come off Route Five S through this driveway here. They'll go through a guard shack where they get checked in. They'll proceed down here and they'll go to their loading docks, which are either on the south side of the building or the west side of the building. As an associate, as an Amazon employee showing up to work every day, you, you will as well come in off Route Five S and proceed to a parking space marked for personal vehicles. Try very hard to second gate tractor trailers and personal cars. Again, this building's five stories. Nothing from this building will be put in a van or a box truck or anything like that and go to your house. This type of facility needs those last mile facilities. So just tractor trailer traffic. Where we're going to have an appearance of approvals. We worked very close to the town of Florida's planning board to achieve our site plan and specialty use permit. At the planning board as, as lead agent with the town of Florida. We also received our C grade M E C, which is a huge milestone project. And then we were before the county's planning board to receive our two grade M approval. So right now, as it stands, the only approval we're working on, we've had good correspondence with DOT is just our highway permit. This week, actually, we're expecting to receive our stage one comfort letter. So with that letter, we have the approvals in hand we need. Aside from building permit, of course, we don't yet have a building permit. This is just another good visual, like shows, shows our building in relation to Target and Beachna. But flip these around. Couple of renderings of what the finished product would look like. And again, trying to keep it pretty brief, but I am happy if anyone has any questions at any point.
Thank you. One question. Would that DOT permit, are they going to require us to connect that?
Yeah, great. Great question, Dan. So yes, we, we, we are going to meet the warrant for a traffic signal.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gwendolyn Sane, and I lead Amazon Economic Development and Expansion Public Policy Efforts for the state of New York, Connecticut, Maryland, and the District of Columbia. Thank you Chair, members of the IDA Board, Ted, Sheila, team, many, you all have been great partners against this point as well as the town. So we're excited to talk about this perspective development and presenting the, the economics and hopefully getting to a partnership with the IDA to make this the reality for the county, the community, and bring the economic impact. With that said, as Sean mentions, this is a first mile fulfillment center that we're proposing. And essentially, what that means is think of it like an online mall, right? Where if you order something off of dot com, more than likely, it's coming from a facility that we're proposing here and making its way through our middle mile and last mile network, which are the delivery stations and vans that we have in the Amsterdam. So we do have an existing facility in Montgomery County. We've been grateful to be partners there. So we're proposing a first mile facility. We have about 10 fulfillment centers across the state of New York, specifically in upstate. We have one in Syracuse, one under construction now in Niagara, in Rochester region that is comparable to what we're proposing here, and then one on Staten Island and a few other source centers, one close by and so forth. In addition to that, we have, you know, over 50 main investments in New York that include our 30 delivery stations, our Whole Foods markets, which is a part of Amazon as well. And so we have about 47,000 full-time employees across the state and over 70,000 indirect employees that we've contributed to, to the economy. And so here, we are proposing to expand our presence in New York and specifically in Montgomery County. We're looking at a multimillion dollar investment of at least 750 jobs. That is, you know, conservative. And with that, those employees receive full-time day one benefits of the same comprehensive health, vision, dental, 401K, match benefits that I get as a corporate employee. The hourly and annual salary employees will get those as well. One unique benefit that I really like to tout about, because I think it, it makes us a differentiator from an employer perspective, is our career choice program. So part of Amazon's effort to upscale our employees and our pledge, we have our signature program that's called Career Choice. So all of our hourly associates, if you've worked with us for at least 90 days, you become eligible for Career Choice. And what Career Choice is, is a prepaid tuition-free program for our associates to pursue a two-year degree, a four-year degree, or even foundational skills to help them do their job better, whether that be ESL, GTC, and, and also, you know, four-year. And yeah, we have 18 partnerships with the SUNY and KUNY network across the state. So employees locally here would have access to SUNY Albany and be able to take, you know, classes there and have access to their full catalog as well as SUNY Empire on, online. Again, our jobs meet people where they're at. So you can have that 18 to 26-year-old who may not know what they want to, to do, right? And they may have taken a couple of classes at community college and are just not sure. Hey, Amazon has a job for you. And by the way, we'll help you pursue what that career journey is, whether it's growing with us and, and within our company because of the, the numerous opportunities that are there, or in-demand private sector, public sector employees, whether that's pursuing a health career, they're a nurse, or IT certification or CBL license. We want to invest in you. And again, part-time, seasonal, flexible jobs are, are going to be a volunteer as well. And again, really meet people where they're at and helping them along their, their journey. That said, big picture, I would say this project presents a transformative economic development project for the county, given the size and scale that we're proposing. And, you know, the level of substantial tax, taxes via to the county and to the school district, even without a pilot, right? Or even with the pilot, I should say. That would create a substantial investment. In addition, sales tax revenue generated from our employees and the wages that they will, you know, have and be spending in the community. We are projecting about 390 construction jobs through the schedule. It's about 18 to 24 month construction schedule. And so those are additional opportunities for local labor, small businesses to participate in the construction of the building and those wages that they'll be earning and spending in the community and in the county. Also, I would say that, you know, with kind of the, the combined, you know, project, we are really looking to, you know, have local partnerships and to be a good corporate citizen. So there's also opportunities, once Amazon is in your community, to be a part of, you know, community engagement and reinvesting in the community and really being a part. Whether our employees are going to be working in the community, we, we plan to recruit from, you know, the county and the surrounding areas. And so again, we hope that we can, you know, get, get to a partnership and, and really make this project possible for, for the county. Any questions?
At this point, is New York State Economic Development put out any incentives to Amazon with this project?
No. I'm assuming you're talking about Empire State Development.
Nothing at this point.
I had one ask, I guess, and you already touched on the Career Choice Program, which is wonderful. I think that would be a big benefit. Would you consider working with our SUNY FMCC and RHF on BOSI's for a more local presence?
Yeah.
In addition to SUNY Albany?
Yeah, so, you know, we have the 18 partnerships now. We're constantly evaluating, you know, who we break on as far as partners. So that's definitely something that like we would evaluate, especially once we're up and operating. We know where, you know, our workforce is coming from, what the opportunities are. We're always open to evaluating new partnerships.
Great, thank you. I think that could be a really, really good partnership, especially with, you mentioned, you know, T E D, TSL. So we've got our BOSI's that can help with that. And then with our, with our local SUNY, we can even tailor, you know, a two-year degree around Jordans. We've done that for Global Fountains, for example.
Okay, great.
Your little, does your, Amazon also encourage your upper-level executives to get involved with boards, charitable organizations, Rotary Clubs?
Yeah, yeah.
Other push it within Amazon too?
Yeah.
Hospital boards?
Yep, as you can imagine, there's a lot of employees across the world, right? But even within New York, we have, you know, 47,000 plus employees. So depending on where folks are originally, and again, once this facility is open, we have our general manager will have, you know, other managers, right? That are just below the, the general manager that, again, we hope will be living in the community and so will avail themselves to those opportunities.
Other questions? No, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll go into the financial reports.
Yep, so, within your packet. Nothing unusual to report. We have some outstanding school deposits that we're working to collect here through this third quarter. But other than that, everything is up to date. Yep. And we have the transaction report included, and we'll just need a motion to approve those transactions.
Any question on the transactions report? We have a motion to accept. I'll offer, I'll second. All in favor? I oppose, stay. Great. Developing loan.
Developing loan report for September is included in your packet. You do see that Ramarreal Properties is paid for. We're still working on the building blocks closeout, the loan that we approved almost a year ago now. It's, it's, there was some hurdles that they needed to get through. Separation of property took a little while. They finally got that together. And then there was some board members that couldn't beat, so that took another couple of months. But they're working on it. Our attorney, Chuck Towns' office, who the county has as their loan attorney, he brought up his paralegal, continuously checks in with them to make sure that, you know, things are staying on track. So it's coming along, it's just, it's just taking a while. But they are anticipated to close here in the next month.
Great. Number one and number two, we're a little behind, but we're in contact with.
Yep, yep. Actually, we're out to see number one today.
Oh, good.
Yep, we went out for a site visit. Christie, I brought Christie along to see the facility. We went to the Yeoman Street facility. He, yeah, he's, he's still doing some work in there. He still has plans to renovate it. He, you know, and then he's got the bakery down at the Riverfront Center. He changed locations from the last time that we had gone out there, a little bit bigger space for him. But he's doing really well. He did stop the distribution of the cookies to the region because it was just too much for him. So he did stop doing that. So that's cookies, there's some in the kitchen. I don't know if the guy's going to eat them all today.
I saw Alex in there, I think they're gone.
So anyways, they're really good. So anyway, so, and then number four, just to let you know, an update on number four. We've got the amendment done, that was, the closing was October's fifth, or fourth, something like that. So that is done. So we re-admitized first payments to be a little bit lower in that, that's going to be written off.
Hey, Sheila, one request, if you have some time.
Yep.
And it's not urgent. It'd be nice maybe to get some feedback from some of our alumni on how they're doing. Maybe in additions to Small Business of the Month, we could add a spotlight as the locals. Yeah. Well, we've had a lot of these success stories. You know, we drive down the corridor, there's a lot of, a lot of businesses in place because of that loan fund.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
You know, anything in the app, anything coming down, you got any requests, getting loans or anything?
We've met with a few in the last few months. I was on phone today with somebody, we met with, I'm down in Amsterdam. So potentially, yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks, Sheila. Marketing report, Vin. Yeah, I'll go through this quickly, but, you know, towards the fun things we have to pack. I have 200 people here, we put the videos up on the website, if people want to take a look at that. Still going forward with some of those events. I know they have a haunted history of that in September as well. Small Business of the Month, we're going out to Rose and Hughes' Funeral Home next week. Oh, nice. I went and visited Rose and Honey, Ben from there, he wanted to push his back, so. Probably do those sometimes in the winter. Get in more representation, squeeze on the snow. Sorry, it was our new client that could cause. Yeah, I talked to him on the hot girl, we can show those in views. Okay, I saw the plaque for, like I said, County Trusted and Rose and Honey, so those. We're also, we're having DPW buy cereals because we're going to sponsor tourism and NBD. See signs along bike back that are going to point into the different villages and have signs of businesses that they go to.
Oh, nice, good idea.
We'll be working on those. The private costs next year, but DPW is going to work on them right now for us. Going with our micro grant, we just had another disbursement that was submitted for 120, 40,000. So getting that grant and hopefully, hoping in the next couple of months, you know, maybe early next spring, we can get all that money out the door. So we'll, we'll follow up with those businesses, see if we can do some type of success story as well.
I ask you this every month, early at that. And then, yes, and then it's like that triangle. Cause we love things.
We contacted.
So, sure, I'll have to go look at that, cause I haven't got to.
I'll meet you out there.
I talked to someone and they said that the, the map and stuff are still there.
I mean, they're, they're partially there. It's like you cannot even beat.
Okay. I reached out to Parks and Rec and they were supposed to look back in their digital files. They think they're very old and they're going to have to recreate only ones to be put on there.
I do have to make.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for marketing? Danny, you're slipping, you forgot about your barge, it's coming down the river.
Yeah.
The seventy-five she both come and if any of them wants to. You ready, Gerald?
I am, very excited.
That would be here Sun, Sunday and Monday. Sunday and Tuesday.
Apparently, I have an I B M from St. Anthony's.
That is, that is what you call the mules.
You weren't able to get that for a while, because now I, he never responded.
All right, good job, Vin. At this point, I'd like to ask if we can go into executive session to talk about a land track transaction as well as some businesses' financial. Second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed, abstained? Perfect. We just got to wait for Vin to pause. Let's wait till Vin gives.
Snack. You're still there. The worst. Right now. In fact, what was a lot. We're gonna put it up. Okay. Yeah. Sure. All right, so we out of exec section. There were no uh. No decisions were made in exec section. Um, onto unfinished business. It is the NBT parking lot.
Great to have that discussion. Um, we're going to counter uh. Offer them uh. A dollar amount of 10,000 for the 15 months. And at that point, I don't know if this would be need to be. That makes sense on that property. So uh, we'll go back with them. Let them know what that is, but we don't need any action.
Great. Um, now on some new business, the uh. The first one we did is CRC meeting. The second one is we have a resolution for the Amazon uh to schedule a public hearing for the Amazon project in town in Florida. Yes, do we have the motion? Uh, second, I'll offer the second.
Next is the public, just a public hearing resolution.
Right, but what's the date of the.
We have the second. Second. Well, obviously, we're gonna let everybody know as many important members as possible.
Yes, so uh, we have first and a second. We'll call please.
And where do I?
Yes.
And Beck?
Yes.
Mark Welling?
Yes.
Brett LeBlanc?
Yes.
Cheryl Reese?
Hi.
Justin Zier?
Hi.
Dan Rodden?
Steve.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the next is the appointment of auditors. Uh, I'm assuming this is the same as what we did at CRC. We had an RFP. We had one person. We had one entity who is our requesting company who's been our auditors. Um, so if we could have a motion to accept the appointment of our auditors. Thank you, the second. Perfect, roll call vote please.
Ed White?
Hi.
Matt Beck?
Yes.
Mark Welling?
Yes.
Brett LeBlanc?
Yes.
Cheryl Reese?
Hi.
Justin Zier?
Hi.
Dan Rodden?
Right. So the last one is the 2026 MCI DA uh post budget. This came to us with a positive recommendation from our governance committee. We have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, uh, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone need to abstain? If not, then can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I will second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone oppose? Abstain.